You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the October 25th, 2022 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all of our teachers and support staff. We continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us tonight in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Amen. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Posed? Thank you. Motion passes. The next is the public, our next order of business is the Public Hearing on the Naming of Carver High School Football Field. And we have three, three people to come up, and you have three minutes to speak. The first is Isaac "Ike" Howard.
Good evening, Board. I'm familiar with most of the, most of the years in my Halloween outfit. Carver's noted for, it's supposed to be the country school, so I'm having correct paraphernalia to represent Carver, okay? We are country. My name is Isaac "Ike" Howard. Played on the first state championship football team. From Winston-Salem, '88, '84, Red Macon Road, Germantown, right, right across the street. I'm here in behalf of Coach Keith Wilks. I, I said Coach, Coach Wilks for naming the field. With that, I guess I'm representing the Carver Alumni Association, which I'm ex-o-president. Also, I'm an active member of the Carver Administration. With that, Coach Wilks, in my time coaching with him and knowing him, not only has he been a coach on the field for athletics, he's been a coach as we need now for our youth in the neighborhood. And even though he is retired, he's still acting as a mentor to many of our students and youth in our programs in the community. Some of the individuals that we have, and I was just looking, one of our coaches, one of the deputies back here, who also helped me out during homecoming. We're still getting over the homecoming and it was a family thing. We're family out of Carver. But keeping it short, I'm here to say that Coach Wilks' blood and tears are on the field and it's even right, rightful so that the field be named after him. And I thank you and ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Kenneth Eaton.
Good evening, School Board.
Good evening.
My name is Kenneth Eaton. I coached at Carver from 1992 to 2010. I was the offensive lineman Coach, Coach Wilks. I also coached, I also coached Coach Wilks when he was at North Forsyth. So, yeah, I'm a little, got a little age on me. But I'm here today because I, I'm always be a Carver, I'm Carver in my heart, I'm blue and gold. But most thing about it, I'm concerned with, Keith put over 800 kids in college, okay? Full scholarships, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. And I think it's the right thing to do because, I mean, hey, he earned that, okay? And I just want y'all to take that in consideration on y'all's decision. And that's all I have to say, and God bless you.
Thank you. Next, Dwayne Little.
Good evening, everyone. Dwayne Little. I know I'm in uniform, but I am not on behalf of the Sheriff's Office at this very time. I have to say that. Part of my job calls me to come and talk to y'all sometimes, but not today. On legal stuff. And I'm gonna try not to get emotional, but Coach, Coach Wilks is more than a coach to me. Coach Wilks drove me to my college visits. Coach Wilks was my mentor all throughout ninth grade attempts. I was a kid that lived on the South Side, but my grandmother stayed on the East Side. And I wore a Carver sweatshirt when I was in fifth grade in my fifth grade picture. Carver was life to me. Carver was family. All of my family on my dad's side went to Carver. So I really didn't have a choice in that. And I did not regret that at one moment. We had a lot of tragedy our years at Carver, from teammates passing away to seasons getting taken away from us. And Coach Wilks taught us perseverance. He taught us the model of seeing it through and fighting for what's right. And going from seven and four, which turned into oh and eleven, to ten and two, to sixteen and oh. I finished my senior season out undefeated. And we were undefeated in a lot of things. We were undefeated in quitting because we would never quit. We were undefeated in classroom because we had over 20 players get scholarships. Twenty seniors got full scholarships or partial scholarships. And some of those players didn't start. They were backups. And Coach Wilks taught us, we were team first. We had players that came from troubled households, so we came together, we gave people rides. We picked each other up. And Coach Wilks acknowledged that. He loved us. In his famous words, "You do it right, you do it light, or if you do it wrong, you do it long." I was, I was punished. I can't count the amount of up downs I had to do my junior year, but I can my senior year because it did not happen as much. He taught us. He loved us. And still to this day, Coach Wilks has a story about how he driving me up to Hampton University, and he was singing some R&B song loud and bad. And he got pulled over by the state trooper. So every time I see Coach Wilks, I pay for that ticket. And I pay for it with my life. I pay for it with my leadership that he has helped garnering me. And I pay for it with my service to the community because he was such a service to us at Carver High School. And it wasn't just the football team, it wasn't just the athletic department, it was everyone that he came in contact with. So I please ask for your consideration. I thank you for your consideration. I ask for the approval of this field being named after the Honorable Coach Keith Wilks because he's more than a coach. He's a father to a lot of us. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. I just want to mention that we did also have a public hearing for the naming of the RJ Reynolds Wrestling Room, but we don't have any one that signed up tonight to speak. Our next order of business is our Special Recognitions. First, oh, we have the National Sorority of the Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated. Basilis Cynthia Russell will be recognizing our Superintendent McManus.
Good evening to our School Board members and Superintendent Tricia McManus. My name is Cynthia Russell, and I am honored and proud to serve as Principal of Gibson Elementary, as well as the President of Beta Lambda Chapter of the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated. We are here this evening to recognize the efforts of Superintendent Tricia McManus as she leads us in educating and supporting the educational goals of over 55,000 students in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. The National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated is an organization of professional educators under the current leadership of our National President, Ms. Margaret Galloway, and Dr. Paxton Squire, our Eastern Region Director. The National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated is an organization of female professional educators. We represent professionals in all components of the learning spectrum. We stand on the shoulders of eight teachers that decided in 1923 in Jersey City, New Jersey, the importance of stimulating professional growth among teachers and encouraging the development of the potential of our youth. Next year, May 23rd, 2023, we celebrate the 100th anniversary of this great organization with chapters in all five regions of the United States. All chapters are dedicated to fulfill the purposes set forth by illustrious founders and work diligently to serve communities by reaching out to students, teachers, and the community at large. You may wonder, how do we impact our local community? Our three-tiered program, Y E S, Youth Education Service, guides us in the work we perform. Our youth programs are designed to develop the potential of our youth. The high school groups, nine through 12 graders, are our Zinos, young ladies, and kudos, our young men. Chapters are committed to sponsoring a variety of community activities that will enable and inspire the youth to attain high ethical, educational morale, and social standards. Students receive life skills, support, academic assistance, test-taking procedures, study skills, tutoring, cultural enrichment, and socialization training. They participate in our annual talent show, oratorical contest, Cinderella Ball, and Educators Breakfast of Excellence, as well as meaningful community service projects, and learn the importance of giving back to our communities. As a step in enhancing their growth, our youth also connect and network with other professionals and participate in our annual Regional Youth Leadership Conference. The young people who have participated in our programs successfully go on to college and careers, becoming self-sufficient adults. We are most proud of our educational component. NSPDK Incorporated awards a $6,000 scholarship to a male and female graduating senior in each of the five regions, the East, Southeast, Midwest, Southwest, and Far East. On the regional level, we provide an opportunity for two youth to win a $50,000 Scholar of the Year Award and an essay contest annually. Local chapters provide two $500 scholarships, $500 scholarships each year. Therefore, the sorority represents over $100,000 annually in scholarship, in scholarships inclusive of those awarded by regions and chapters. We also provide workshops for teacher development and mentoring, parent workshops on the new trends in education, and how to help children succeed with new curriculum standards. Last but not least, our organization provides financial support to third world, third world countries through an ongoing strategic partnership with Africa to reach and support the people on the African continent, and also donates $10,000 annually to fund the sickle cell anemia research at Maher Medical College in Nashville, Tennessee. As you can see, the goals of our organization align with the goals of Superintendent McManus. In this basket, we have provided our recent national and eastern regional publications. Hopefully you will find a minute to peruse the articles written by educators within our organization. We, the members of National, we, the members of Beta Lambda Chapter, stand with Superintendent McManus, but we believe, as John Dewey stated, what the best and wisest parent wants for his own children, own child, that must the community want for all of its children. Thank you again, Superintendent McManus, for demonstrating your love for all the children in our community.
Thank you all. That is so nice. Next, we will have the AP Teacher Recognitions presented by Sajada Laten, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Core.
Good evening, Board. We have an extra special celebration today for our Advanced Placement BC Calculus classes. AP BC Calculus explores the concepts, methods, and applications of differential and integral calculus, including topics such as parametric, polar, vector functions, and series. Students perform experiences, experiments, investigations, and they solve problems. For the 2021-2022 school year, all 76 students from our district taking AP BC Calculus received a score that earned them college credit. Additionally, 52 students received the highest possible score. We would like to recognize Lisa Putnam, Jill Branoff, and Dr. Martinez at the Career Center for this incredible accomplishment.
Thank you so much. Last, but certainly not least, is our Board Spotlight video.
In October, WSFCS held the 26th Annual Marching Band Jamboree at Glenn High School. It was a spectacular event as 11 different high schools took their turns presenting their halftime marching band shows in front of a packed house.
Everybody's excited to watch all the kids perform, and it's, it's almost like a football game, but only the halftime part. One of our coolest events, because this event brings all of our high school marching bands together and eighth graders.
Fan jamboree is huge. It's a wonderful way for our students to showcase everything that they've done throughout the year.
This is probably the biggest thing, just being in front of other bands and so many people. It's, it's a fun experience.
We do competitions and everything, but to be able to showcase everything that we've been doing in front of the whole county is, is something special.
Superintendent Tricia McManus even got to join in on the fun as the special guest drum major for the final showcase of the night that included over 500 marching band members.
It's like the fireworks at the end of the fair, right? It's just the big final culmination, everything all coming together, and it's just a really awesome way to end the night.
In our employee spotlight, WSFCS is recognizing Aretha Jones-Maltree. She receives a Lifetime Achievement Award for the Mayor's Council for Persons with Disabilities. Ms. Maltree has spent 30 years in education and has been an integral part of supporting those in our community with disabilities through her position with the WSFCS Transition Team. Congratulations, Aretha. We are proud that you're a part of our team. October is a busy month for WSFCS, and we're proud to recognize several initiatives and professional groups throughout the month. Those recognitions include National Fire Prevention Week, which is highlighted by our district's fire academies. Schools like Whittaker Elementary celebrated Unity Day, and Red Ribbon Week as a part of Bully Prevention Month. National Physical Therapy Month, and Down Syndrome Awareness Month are also recognized in October. We'd also like to acknowledge all of our outstanding principals as we celebrate National Principals Month. And believe it or not, but that's not all that's recognized in October. National School Lunch Week is also this month. It's a special week of celebration designed to bring attention to the school lunch program and the impact it has on our students. WSFCS has an average of almost 25,000 students that take advantage of our lunch program every day.
Just highlights how important lunch is for our district and what we do every day because studies have shown that kids really do better in classes and listen better, pay attention to their teachers when they have full bellies, and that comes from the programs that we offer.
And while the focus is on the meals they provide, let's not forget about the people behind the scenes making it all possible. We visited with the kitchen staff at Smith Farm Elementary and found them hard at work preparing food for the day. For them, it's a labor of love.
That's why I'm here. I think that's why we're all here. We love to provide balanced meals. We make sure that the kids have their meats, grains, fruits, and veggies every day. We just love what we do, and we're here every day to provide for the kids, and we're gonna keep on doing it as long as possible.
National Hispanic Heritage Month is also recognized every year from mid-September to mid-October. WSFCS is proud to celebrate the occasion across the district.
Mexico, Mexico!
Spies Global Elementary held their second annual Hispanic Heritage Parade this month as first graders and their teachers displayed signs, waved flags, wore traditional clothing, and celebrated the countries they've been learning about in class.
Next is the Sacagawas class. She's representing the home country of Peru.
We wanted to teach our students some costumes of different countries. Also, we showed them some dances, some songs.
And I think they will never forget that her first grade teacher was from Peru.
This is a special, a special celebration for us, and it's what's incredible about Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is that we have so many cultures coming together within our schools. And that is from the students, but also from the teachers. Great celebration and a great way to kind of end Hispanic Heritage Month.
School Bus Safety Week is also in October. WSFCS takes the safety of our buses and our students seriously, so much so that the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles has entrusted the WSFCS Communications and External Relations Team to produce the latest safety videos from bus drivers across the state. The videos showcase how to inspect school buses before a trip, and every school bus driver in the state is required to watch. It marks the fifth time WSFCS has produced a bus safety video for the NCDMP. We even had some help from NASCAR legend Richard Petty on the initial video in 2009. WSFCS is proud of our longstanding relationship with the NCDMP, and we look forward to helping ensure school bus safety in our state for years to come. And finally, in October, WSFCS would like to recognize a group of unsung heroes, our school custodians. We visited Parkland High School and caught up with their custodian, Stanley Williams, a Core Awards finalist, who's worked in the district, making schools shine for the last 19 years.
When I first came to the school system, it was about, I needed a job. I need to make some money. Nowadays, as an older person, I have to ask myself, what type of impact? What can I do to be a positive role model? Students need, they need positive role models, not just the administrative staff. I mean, from the, from the principal, all the way down to the bus driver, custodians, the cafeteria workers. You never know what type of impact that you have on, on kids.
His impact at Parkland is unmistakable, but don't take our word for it. Listen to what his coworkers have to say.
Mr. Stanley Williams is the best thing that's ever happened to Parkland High School, as far as I'm concerned.
He's not just a custodian to us. He is a family member. He really, the kids know him and love him. Like, he is just, he's just a good guy.
And he's a phenomenal role model for our kids here at Parkland.
Mr. Williams is one of the main forces that I have found here at Parkland that helps keep us going, helps us looking great. The students love him, the staff love him. He is an integral part of our community.
I just thank God for the situation that he put me in to, to reach out to kids. I just, just wanna play a role in what we're doing. The school system is, this is a big machine, and everybody's got to play their part. I wanna continue. If I can just reach one kid, if I can reach one kid that day, I did, I did great. I did great.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for all you do at Parkland High School and for the valuable lesson you've provided us all. And thank you to all the custodians in our district. Just like Mr. Williams, you make a difference in our schools every single day. And that puts the finishing touch on this month's Board of Education Spotlight.
And I just want to thank everybody that has a role to play in producing this Board Spotlight video because they are just so wonderful and enlightening and just bring to focus what we are all about as a district. So, and thank you, Brett. You always sound so great. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. We have one speaker. And please just remember to be kind and respectful, and know that we cannot speak about personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and our speaker is Peter Antonasi.
Good evening, and thank you, Chair, Board Superintendent, for allowing these comments. I would like to focus on what's important, and that's providing a safe and healthy environment in which every child has an opportunity to learn. The agenda item I wish to comment on is the extra $110,000 requested for the development of the Brown's Field site selected for Brunson Elementary. The site is recognized by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality as Brown's Field Project 25041-21-034. I'm stating this project number since our school district has repeatedly filed environmental reports with a different and invalid project number. Whether this error was intentional or not, the consequence is obvious. An invalid project number makes it very difficult to obtain information via public records request. My three questions to the Board tonight are: One, how many more 2016 school bond dollars do you plan to spend on the environmental cleanup of this abandoned coal-fired manufacturing plant? Two, how is the school district going to guarantee that a school on the site is safe for children to play and learn? And three, how much longer is the start of construction going to be delayed? The Brunson community, who has promised new facilities, would have been operational this year. Tonight, I'm making a bold prediction. Brunson Elementary will not be constructed on this site. Perhaps parents and staff will not assume the environmental risks. The state may never approve the proposed site use for a school. Maybe the costs of environmental cleanup will be too high. Maybe all of the above reasons. I'm pretty confident this bond project is dead. And during my public comments section, during the public comments section at the end of tonight's meeting, I'll explain why. I brought handouts. Thank you for listening, and again, please consider my comments before approving this $110,000 expenditure. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the Superintendent's Update.
Thank you. So we, as you saw on the earlier slides, there's a lot going on the month of October, and this weekend is no exception. Here are just a few items that are happening this weekend. We've got the Buddy Walk at West Forsyth High School Saturday Robot Run, which is also Saturday. That's where all of our middle schools robotics teams are coming to compete. It's a great event, and that is happening Saturday. And then also, there is an exhibit opening that our district has played an important role in called Rooted in Race. That is opening at Union Station, and I just wanted to share a quick snippet about that. But it's Triad Cultural Arts. The city of Winston-Salem and the Winston-Salem Foundation are presenting the exhibit Rooted in Race, and it's a community's journey to school integration, which can be viewed at this historic site. this historic site. And it began as a virtual exhibit, a collaboration, to provide the community with an interactive way to reflect on the human impact of school desegregation and efforts to improve school quality in Winston-Salem. And so, I just, I don't know if Board Member Woodbeard, I don't know if you've been part of the planning. I know that you're, you work closely with Triad Cultural Arts. Did you want to say anything about that event this weekend? I'm putting you on the spot, sorry.
I just want to thank Winston-Salem Foundation and Cheryl Harry, who is the president and CEO of Triad Cultural Arts for providing this resource, this asset, to our community so that my commitment is for our children to understand this community's journey and that we can be better neighbors to one another.
Absolutely. Thank you. And the neat part about this is that it is from the voices. It's oral histories from current and former school students and staff to provide this historical path. And so, I think that if anyone can get out for, it can be the opening or just, it's going to be showing for a while, but I think that's an important event for us to attend. Also, Saturday, November 5th, I hope everyone will come to our Veterans Day Parade. It's the entire county and city on Fourth Street, and we have a lot of our JROTC color guards will be there and our bands. So, let's fill the streets in support of our veterans who are the reason we have the freedoms we have in our country, others that have sacrificed. I have got to get the time, but I, last year it started, because last year was the same day as our showcase. It was a busy day. Luckily, I have one more slide to show you our showcase. But I think last year, Brent, do you know the time of this? I don't think we know. I will get that back to everyone. He's looking it up. But I've asked for a flyer so that we can get it out, so we will do that. Last year, I think it started at about 9:00, but I, we will get that out. And last but not least, November 19th, all of our schools will be at the fairgrounds for our showcase, our school showcase. It's 10 to 2:00, so we hope that all of our families will come out and get to see all of our schools and all of the great opportunities we have for students in every single one of our schools. And so, we're looking forward to Saturday, November 19th, 10 to 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. First is the grants update by Dr. Leslie Alexander, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, School Board Members, Superintendent McManus. This is a good update. This is an exciting one to get to do, so I'm happy to be here to do it with you guys. We just want to talk a little bit about our approach to seeking grants. Our school district incorporates a strategic focus to seek grants to support our five district goals. And over the past 24 months, we've actually been received over $25 million in grant funding. So, that's like over a million dollars a month. So, that's, that's pretty good. And while I'm involved in two of these grants, the real warriors of this initiative are Andy Kraft's department, Andy Kraft, Victoria Fulton, and Latandra Baldwin. Couldn't be here tonight, but Victoria, would you stand? Because I think you wrote every single one of these grants. So, if any of us have job security, I think it's Victoria. We're not going to go over all of the grants, but we're going to just highlight a few, a few of them that are, you know, high dollar and also that help us support our strategic goals. So, Goals 1 and 2 are to raise student achievement, close achievement gaps, and ensure equitable and equal access to quality instruction, and to provide quality instructional facilities to all of our students. And our 21st Century Grant, it's 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant for $635,000, provides after-school tutoring in math and English language arts to selected schools. It also helps with STEM education, SCL enrichment, and summer school opportunities. So, that's a pretty exciting one. And then our strategic goal 3, last time you guys met, you heard about the initiative around the Education Collaborative. And so, this is seed money to start that, that particular 501(c)(3), and so, the $15,000 will get us headed in the right direction on that grant. We also have a United Way Place Matters Grant that provides a freshman transition coordinator at Carver High School. Yay, Carver! And then our strategic goal 4 is to recruit and retain a highly effective workforce that supports district goals to ensure excellence for all. You guys probably remember hearing about our Equity Centered Pipeline Initiative, our Principal Pipeline Grant from the Wallace Foundation, which is $8 million. We've been able to do some very creative things with that. We've been able to crosswalk, crosswalk our state evaluation system and our 16 equity actions created by our district to come up with four domains and nine competencies for our principals. And so, we'll be using those as we develop and train our principals throughout the year. We're also working with Appalachian State University and UNCG. They've been part of this grant, and they have helped to create some induction programs and an aspiring principal program, which will benefit our assistant principals who hope to move on and be leaders in our district. We also were able to create a mentoring program this year where we targeted highly effective principals with the track record of moving schools and closing achievement gaps for students to mentor our new principals and our assistant principals. So, at the end of this whole grant, we'll have a leader tracking system, which is a technology, a database, where principal supervisors can go in and search the available candidates in our, who have applied to and have been accepted into our pools to see which ones have which competencies, which ones have which experience qualifications that they're looking for. So, that's an end goal that we'll be able to produce through this grant. And then our T-Slip Grant is a 13 and a half million dollar grant. We're really excited about this one, too, because when we think about our pipeline, it starts with our teachers and getting our teachers into our classrooms, and they might at some point become principals, but they might stay and become teacher leaders at their own school as well. So, the really neat thing about this one is our district will have its own EPP Educated Preparations Program. So, we will be able to take teachers, be able to certify them in-house, and so, that's going to be a really exciting opportunity that will allow us to develop our pipeline. In addition, these two grants sort of come together. They, they are kind of headed in the same direction, and one of the deliverables for the T-Slip Grant is to develop an online repository of PD, targeting the development of the competencies that we've developed as critical for our school leaders. So, that's exciting. Goal 5, we have a Safer Schools Grant where we've been able to purchase some portable metal detectors. We've been able to purchase an AED system for each high school to help with having more devices on campuses. We also were able to partner with the I Love You Guys Foundation to implement a standard response protocol so that we can improve the safety of our schools. And then also, we have an SCL in Action Award, which is $30,000. This is a pilot program, the first year, and it's working with three schools, Reynolds, Philo, and Waukertown Middle. And then we're hoping to hear back and add two more schools, North Forsyth High School and Winston-Salem Prep. And if that isn't good enough, we also have over a million dollars that we're waiting to hear about. So, the two grants that we're waiting to hear about here are our Volunteer General Fund Grant. It's with AmeriCorps, and this is going to be a database that helps us to attract and develop our volunteers to work with our schools and to be able to have a database so we can track and help to keep track of them and utilize them and train and develop them. And then we'll, also, we're waiting to hear about the second round of the Safer Schools Grant, and so, that's $741,000, and that'll allow us to continue the work, the good work that was started with the initial Safer Schools Grant. Any questions?
It's just all really good.
All right. Thank you.
Next is our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Social Studies Update, making the shift from learning to doing social studies. Presenting will be Sagata? Nope.
Good evening.
Courtney.
Courtney Tuck. Thanks for having us tonight. So, I wanted to come and give you an update on our new social studies standards and the work that's been done in social studies over the past year. So, thank you for having us. As you all know, the new social studies standards were approved by the state in late February of last year, 2021. Miraculously, we were able to begin the implementation of those brand-new standards in August. Many thanks to the team that joins me here tonight, so I want to take a moment to honor their incredible work and accomplishments in being able to turn this around in such a quick timeframe, as well as to produce really high-quality things for our teachers. So, many thanks. As we started this school year, we did have curriculum design and unit planning organizers in place for our courses K-8 and two of our high school courses for World History and Civic Literacy. Two of those courses with the new standards will roll out in next August with 2023 with our EPF, our Economics and Personal Finance Class, and our new Combined American History. The standards take American I and American II and put them back together. So, with that change of the new standards, there were new standards for all courses and all grades, but there were some significant content changes that we've highlighted here for you. Second grade began to teach US history in a very foundational opening of conversation way. Fifth grade became a full survey of US history versus ending at the Civil War. Eighth grade shifted to a more North Carolina focus versus a US history. World history started at 1200 versus having all of our ancient civilizations. And then we have our three high school changes with Civic Literacy, the separation of civics and economics into two courses, and then the full survey of American history. Wanted to also give you a chance to take a look at some of the changes with the objectives. You see two comparison charts for second grade. The specificity of the language in the standards changed dramatically. If you look at the old standards as compared to the new, our second grade history standard used to say identify contributions of historical figures, and you kind of could pick and choose whomever, and the new language is very specific about making sure that we include all voices and have representation. So, that specificity leads us into our new documents, which we have been very intentional about including multicultural voices throughout the curriculum that has been designed so that it is no longer an add-on, it is no longer an extra set of lessons, it is blended in and taught within the whole curriculum. The other part of our new standards is the idea of inquiry, and every grade level, K-12, has a set of inquiry standards. It's about having kids to think critically, evaluating sources, using evidence, and solving problems. Wanted to give you a taste of what that looks like, so we'll start with our kindergarten, where we just make this shift from learning to doing social studies. And in kindergarten, we're going to talk about how has being a kid changed over time? And we're just asking our little folks to take a look at some pictures and identify changes. When we get to third grade, we step up and we ask them to start doing some evaluation. When was it better to be a kid? And so, they have to look at these primary sources and then make a judgment and produce evidence to support that. When we get to fifth grade, we're going to kind of keep this same idea, but ask them why has being a kid changed? So, we not only have to identify the changes, but we have to then understand the motivation for those changes. And so, we ask them to do the same type of exercise and adding on additional primary sources that ask them to process data and come up with some answers on their own. We have, last week, we let you all experience one of our high school inquiries where we asked this question of, was justice hindered in the Mississippi Burning case in an address to the American History, Civics, and Government Standard about critiquing the extent to which various levels of government have used their power to expand or restrict the freedom and equality of American people? And that's a hard question. It's a really hard question, and it's a really hard topic, but we used primary sources from the Johnson Presidential Library and asked you all to listen to phone conversations and read telegrams and come up with your answer to this question and use those sources as your evidence to your answer. So, we are very excited about our new social studies standards. We're excited about our new social studies curriculum, and we're excited to be part of the journey towards this goal as a district, our 90 by 25 goal. And we know that as social studies teachers, we contribute a lot with the vocabulary and the content knowledge that is important for our students when they come to read. Marzano's research shows us that 55% of all academic vocabulary of our students has its root in the social studies, and so, that is a very, very, very significant part of them being successful readers. We also know that background knowledge has a huge role to play in how well they understand what they read. And so, we are all about trying to incorporate those things in all of our curriculum, as well as in the lessons that we're helping teachers with. The 2020 Fordham Institute also shows us that when first through fifth grade students have intentional time for social studies, that their reading scores are dramatically impacted. And this data also says that the ones that benefit the most from that are our young girls and our students from lower-income and non-English-speaking homes. So, we are very excited to do the best we can to have great social studies instruction that's going to help us meet that literacy goal by 2025. Thank you.
Any questions?
I wanted to make a couple comments. First, it was so moving for all of us to go through that Mississippi Burning example and to be exposed to primary sourceage, which is the most critical thing our kids can learn how to do. And I guess I just also have to say that in honor of Rebecca McKnight, who has been so powerful in this district, all I can imagine is her being totally proud and impressed and blown away by the work that you have done to take all of the good work that was her life's work and made it yours. So, I just thank you so much.
Board Member Crowley?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that, that this board, when we first started, we were, we took part in a very controversial vote about mandating African-American studies, and this board was committed to not making that a one-off or an extra class that kids could choose to take or not to take, but said that it was important that we had it, that we had all cultures represented through our curriculum. And I think this is a really big first step that we've taken to do that.
So, I'll first say that, Ms. Tuck, your entire team is to be committed for this work. I would say that it's extremely important to me, to Board Member Crowley's point, that social studies not be something that, is something that a focus is on, but the cultural infusion piece is not something that's extra. It's embedded in the very marrow of the curriculum so that children are able to see themselves in every single facet of it, and I think that that's amazing. I think that's fantastic. But also, and this is less, this is sort of less of a statement, I think, that sort of you can work on, although it actually is related, but it's more for the superintendent and just to reiterate the point that I made last week, which is that when I was in high school, civics and economics was state-tested, and so, there was an emphasis on it because everybody wanted to do well on the test. When that was taken away, and I think that one of the things that we have to make sure that we are focused on is ensuring that there's fidelity across the instruction of social studies across the district, because it's not something that I think is focused on as much, because it's not necessarily associated with the composition of the scores and things of that nature.
Yes. Board Member Parker?
You know, it was a great fun activity, and I appreciate you all bringing that interactive activity to us, and it just reiterated to me how it involves all students, and it, and all students are made, whether they are shy and don't always voice it, but everyone is made to think critically, and they're also made to think about how their inner being and how they themselves view different things in history and why they view that and how they view that. And so, that was just, it was just wonderful. I just kind of, social studies was always my favorite subject anyway, so now I want to go back and do it all over in a different way. And so, thank you so much for, for what you're doing for our students, because I think it really makes a difference in, in their whole life. I think it really makes a difference in their whole life. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to also thank this team for their exceptional work to bring history alive. You know, it is my commitment also as a licensed-certified social studies teacher of North Carolina. So I believe we give purpose to the other content. And so I am shoulder-to-shoulder with you in making sure that social studies throughout North Carolina is, you know, one of the core subjects that really help us to be, you know, great citizens in this democracy. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Before we move on, I'm sorry. I know that we weren't able to show all of what we were able to experience last week, but I think one of the things that we were blown away by was that our students are not reading something from just a textbook, but we're actually listening to phone conversations from, you know, the president. And we're really looking at a typed, you know, letter that was sent. So it's living history. It's bringing through technology to our students. And so it's not the sit-and-get and memorize all of the dates that we probably did when I went through school. So it's an amazing thing, and I think that's why we wanted to make sure that our community heard the great things that are going on in social studies. And like Mr. Bohannon, the experiences, we know one of the things that our students need are more a variety of experiences. And so through social studies, I think there's so many things that, not only in the classroom, but also very intentional with field trips that connect and all those things. So I'm excited about that. Of course, I am a history major, so kind of like, I want to go back and do that again as well. So, but yeah, thank you for your entire team and all that you do. And it was a wonderful experience. And I'm excited, and I hope that through that, that some of those resources that our students have, their parents, will get engaged in to see that, I think through something like that, there's no opinion given. It's all about you find the evidence and you make your decision yourself. And so it's a lot of critical thinking. It was a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I think, given that everybody on the board wants to take social studies again.
Yes, yes, we do.
It might be actually really wonderful to have some community times where people could come work together through some of the lessons, particularly given that there is so much fear amongst people about social studies in our community. And whether social studies is being biased or trying to have an agenda or trying to teach a certain way of thinking about things. And because the work that, I think it also has to really be pointed out, was created by this team. It is not just introduced by this team, but the incredible work that was created. I think it would do our community a world of good to understand exactly what's happening in social studies in our classrooms, because it's not an agenda-driven. It is driven towards helping people understand history, that it happened with real people, and that primary sources are very important. So perhaps we could all get a little more social studies in Forsyth County.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Next is the implementation update on the Code of Character Conduct and Support by Dr. Frederica Stokes.
Good evening, board members. I want to first start with a presentation of a video regarding one of our schools who's doing outstanding work as it relates to the implementation of the code.
Behaviors weren't changing, and students weren't really doing a whole lot of work in the classroom when they were assigned to ISS. So I had a teacher who had this idea that we were going to revamp what that looked like. My teacher, Susan Darbelsuk, had the idea of creating BASE, and that stands for the Behavior Academic Social Emotional Class. So there is a very intentional design of the day for students so that they can get their academics, they're having a time where they are addressing their emotional needs, they try to get to the root cause of the behavior that got them assigned to removal from the classroom. And as I do my visits to schools, I see schools that have really been working on this and have embraced the changes and have done some really very intentional work on improving culture for kids. In my visit to Wiley, I noticed an incredible change. They've always had a good culture, but this year, in my visit, I was like, it feels really different. The first thing that we saw is that students were actually getting some work done. Of course, it's, we have a dynamic teacher who's able to facilitate instruction for all the grade levels. They do a reflection. They figure out what they're doing. They help build skills so that when they go back to the classroom, they've got some new strategies so that they don't get angry or they don't act out. Culture is one of our big rocks for the district, and that is helping schools work with teachers to develop skills, the mindsets, the attitudes really needed to change culture. So we've got some students who choose to come back now. They have a relationship. So when they know they're getting, you know, kind of escalated, they'll say, can I just go down to BASE for a minute? You really have to say, what are the most important things? What are the majors? I always say, if you major in the minors, you're going to get nothing accomplished. So what are the things we can major in that are major?
Hi, I'm Julie.
There are only focusing on things that they think are creating the biggest concerns or the biggest barriers to learning. And so one of those is around cell phones. And so they've been very clear with students about what do we do with our cell phones along campus. One of the things they decided not to make as a major incident is the use of hoodies. They're letting kids wear the hoodie as long as it's not disruptive to education. The Code of Character Conduct and Support is really about just creating a positive culture for kids, one that is not free of consequences, because that is still a part of it, but that is focused on restorative interventions and restorative practices. But the focus is really on how can we start moving away from being punitive to being restorative? And that's really what the code is all about. But it's also about setting very clear expectations in schools, holding students and adults to those high expectations. This year specifically, we've got sewing for service. It's a sewing club, but they're building, creating things that will be donated to organizations. We've started a kindness club, who do random acts of kindness. We've got two mentor programs, one for our gentlemen called the League of Extraordinary Gentlemen, and we have lead girls. The league is our in-house staff who facilitate that. Our goal was to equip students so that they don't continue to misbehave. And we've seen, we've got the data that shows that most students, not all, that spend some time in BASE with the teacher and the assistant who's in here, they don't repeat behaviors. But at the end of the day, if we've got students who are doing better than they were, that's the goal. It doesn't have to be discipline, it has to be a consequence. And consequences aren't always punitive.
So this is just one example of what's right with the code. And one example, because many of our schools are implementing different programs through ISS, and they're working on the culture by building relationships. Those mentor programs, it helps to build relationships. It helps with a sense of belonging. So this is one example of one school, but we have a lot of schools that are doing a great job with the implementation process. Do we have hiccups sometimes? Yes. But I think all of our schools are committed to the code and committed to the change in culture and climate. And so I just wanted to give you guys an update, give everyone an update on where we are. At the end of last school year, we adopted a new code. And from the adoption process, the next step was phase three, which is the orientation of stakeholders. So I really want to go through just a few of our stakeholders and how they were oriented. Dr. Cato, who is our chief, provided a lot of orientation and a lot of professional learning with different staff members. He worked with our bus drivers, our child nutrition staff, our custodial staff. And our principals were charged with coming in in July with a team, their core behavior team, to receive orientation training. That occurred in July. And from July, in August, they worked, that core behavior team worked on a presentation, worked on how they were going to roll it out to their students, how were they going to roll out the orientation to their parents. So administrators were responsible for the orientation of our students' parents and of their staff members. And so that all occurred in July. And then the district leaders, such as Dr. Cato, they were trained also in the month of July. We used a standard presentation to make sure that every school received the same type of training. And so that was phase three of the orientation of stakeholders. That's complete. That was through July and the very beginning of August. Our students, they all received instruction on the code regarding their responsibilities. Our parents received their responsibilities also, and our staff members received their rights and responsibilities. From, for the students, they received lesson plans that was appropriate for their grade level on teaching them about the code. So the orientation process was from July to August, and we've completed that process. From there, we moved into phase four, the implementation. And we started with universal classroom strategies. So teachers and staff members were trained on these various topics within the school meet-and-greet. And you saw some of that in the video. You saw where the gentleman was patting the student on the back. You saw the greetings. That was a part of the meet-and-greet. Personal check-ins. How do you check in with the student, just to make sure things are going good, that they have a good night, are they ready for the day? Turning talks, getting attention, teaching our students, how do you get attention when you need something? Are you raising your hand? How do you get attention when you need something from your teacher? We talked about classroom send-out and re-entry. What is the plan? We talked about responsive listening, clear instructions. And that's been very clear. We saw that on the video about the cell phones, providing students with clear instructions about when to use it, when not to use it, when should you have it out, when should you not have it out. And so we've gone through all of those different universal strategies at the very beginning of the month. So August and September, we focused in on all of these universal classroom strategies to help build the core behavior practices within our schools. From there, we started working in August with our student services staff. Those are all of our counselors, our social workers, our graduation coaches, our school nurses. During their monthly meetings, they receive restorative interventions. We've trained them on restorative conversations, check-in and checkout, and behavior problem-solving conferences. So those are all the interventions that are complete as of right now, which we've trained staff on from July to October. From there, we've also implemented additional ongoing professional learning sessions, educators' handbook training. That's the system that we're using to capture if we're doing restorative conversations, if we're doing various interventions with our students. So all of that is captured. Everything that goes in educators' handbook, some things are minors, some things where the teachers have already spoken to the students or they made a phone call home, it didn't warrant a suspension. But they've done things within the classrooms through those universal strategies that we taught to help support students without a referral being sent. So for educators' handbook training, that's been ongoing. Dr. Cato and his team has worked with individuals from educators' handbook to train administrators. I believe our social workers also receive training. And so he's our assistant principal, so he's worked to make sure that staff had the necessary trainings. And then principals went back and trained their teachers on how to use educators' handbook. How do you put your discipline referrals in the educators' handbook so that we can make sure that we're tracking the interventions, the things that we are just teaching our staff to do, those restorative conversations? How are we capturing that and making sure that those things are happening? And then we've had behavior support training. Ms. Shannon Dobson is our Director of Behavior Support, and she has started working with our ISS teachers. She's also training our behavior support staff within the schools. She's doing a lot of training regarding de-escalation. She's doing a lot of research-based strategies. How do we de-escalate situations when they're starting to get out of hand? So she's working with our behavior support staff in our schools. She's also going out her team, and they're doing observations, they're doing trainings within the schools. But every month, she's also conducting trainings. And then she's also conducting NCI safety training. Those are our crisis trainings to make sure that individuals are safe within our schools. And she's providing that as it relates to behavior and how we respond to various behaviors. Our next steps, because that's just through October, so our first seven weeks, eight weeks of school, we still will receive training throughout the remainder of this year. We also go back and do booster sessions, so we know you've received the meet-and-greet, you've received depersonalization. Let's go back and revisit that. So principals are doing booster sessions with their staff regarding anything that we have trained on. So this has just been the original rollout. And so we're starting to get familiar with restorative conversations. We're starting to learn about how do we make sure that we de-escalate situations better. And so this is a start. This implementation phase just started in August, and we're continuing to train. So the next steps that we have, we're going to develop our code review and revision process, because as we go through, we're looking at, okay, are there some changes that need to be made? If so, we're documenting those and we're documenting recommendations. And then the committee will come back together to say, how do we update this? What do we, what do we think need to be changed? Are there additional trainings? Are there situations where we need to go back and do additional boosters? And so that's the first step. The next step is, we still have other prevention strategies. We still have other classroom strategies that we still have to work through. So we're going to continue the professional learning. As stated, we're doing trainings every month on the code. And then we're continuing the support for student services personnel on implementation of Tier Two interventions. How are our student services staff responding? How are our counselors responding? Our school psychologists, our social workers. And so we're going to continue that training throughout their monthly professional development meetings. And then we're going to continue specific training and support for our in-school suspension. We really want to reimagine our in-school suspensions at every single school. Wiley was a great example, but we want to reimagine that at all of our schools across the district, that it's a place where they're coming, they're learning, they're getting the skills, they're accepting responsibility for some of their behaviors. And then they're going right back into the school. So we want it to be a time where it's not just punitive, but they're learning and they're getting the skills that are needed. And so we're doing a lot of work with those in-school suspension teachers, and then our school-based behavior intervention staff, providing that additional support. What questions do you guys have?
Any questions?
I suppose my question probably, it is a part of the changes of policy 4116, but it refers in there to the school-based team that takes, I think the language in the policy says that after two repeated behaviors of the same unacceptable behavior, that then the teacher may report that behavior, and then the school team will look at that and do that. So about, how long is that process taking?
So, Deanna, I'm going to have to refer to you. You said it's within policy, or is that just a part of our code?
It's a part of the code.
Okay, okay. If it's a part of the code, it just depends upon the situation. If it's a part of the code, it just depends upon the situation. Once the teacher, if the student has a behavior problem, they may correct the student. The student may be okay, and they may not have to go to the next level. They may talk with the, they may talk with the student, they may call the parents. And so it depends on what are the interventions that are being done. And so then, once they make the referral, the principal is looking at all of those things. They're taking in consideration everything regarding that student. They're looking at, you know, they may have an IEP or five or four. They're looking at specific situations. And from there, they make a determination regarding what are the next steps. And so a lot of that, once a referral is made, it goes to the principal. And they're looking at that. And they may decide that, hey, we need a consultation with the counselor instead of out-of-school suspension. So it just varies from situations to situations regarding what are the next steps. There are some times where a teacher has done, you know, went above and beyond. A lot of times they do with helping to support this student prior to even making the referral. So they're looking at all of that. They're looking at the interventions, the phone calls home. They're looking at those things also when they're making a decision regarding, you know, should they be suspended, or should they go to ISS? Or should it be a referral to a counselor? And so it just varies.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, 'cause it references the committee. So that is done by the principal only, and in another situation would it go to the school-based committee?
Yeah, it's a core behavior team. But the referral is always gonna go to the principal. So sometimes they may refer out to the student services team. Because there's a student services team. If you're meeting with the kid and you found out that they're homeless or that they have some special circumstances, then a lot of times they will send them to that student services team for additional support and resources.
So every time, I guess my hang-up about that, the way the language kinda read was after two unacceptable behaviors, that they would go to the school, you know, the school-based team. And I thought, that is gonna take a lot of time. Okay, I understand. Thank you for walking me through that process, 'cause I was a little confused as to whether that was gonna be cumbersome or not.
Yeah.
Okay, Board Member Crowley?
Yes, so what's the recourse for teachers or bus drivers and students who feel like situations are not being addressed?
I think the recourse is first their school-based administrator, the principal. And for students, I always say, find a trusted adult. It could be their counselor that they could speak with, or it could be an administrator. I like to make sure that, you know, our student services staff is there to support kids, especially when they feel like they've been wronged, or if they feel like things aren't working. But we know that principals, like for your bus drivers, teachers, principals are your go-to people, person to actually talk with. But for our students, I wanna make sure that, you know, they know that any trusted adult that they feel like they can trust in their schools, that should be the person that they reach out to if they feel like, oh, this is not happening. Or, for example, if I'm being bullied or things like that, and they need support, any trusted adult in their school. It could be their teacher, it could be their counselor, it could be their social worker, or it could be their administrator. So I don't wanna give them just one person. But for bus drivers, any of our staff, their principal or their assistant principal is their go-to person.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Bohannon?
A few. So Dr. Stokes, where does or will the accountability for the code kinda be housed? And I ask that, in, is it, as a principal, and in terms of, you know, what I'm doing relative to the code at my school, I would assume that would be, you know, with my area superintendent, who is responsible for evaluating me. But it sounds like, you know, in Dr. Nikado's role, he's sort of been providing the initial training. I guess the impetus for my question is that we're sort of in the space of, it's new, we're rolling it out, we're trying to give people time to kinda get adjusted. But where will the accountability be?
So that Dr. Nikado is responsible for the resources and the supports. So we're providing training and we're providing supports. The accountability, I would say, is with the area superintendents, because they are meeting with their principals at least weekly, probably almost daily that they talk with them. But they are meeting with them, and they're having the conversations around discipline. They're looking at the numbers. They're looking at their restorative practices, the responses to the discipline. And so the accountability piece is with the area superintendents, because they are continuing to have those conversations. They're looking at the data. And they're also giving them ideals and giving them strategies. When they see the discipline numbers are high, they're saying, have you tried this? Or they say, have you reached out to Dr. Nikado's team? What resources are we providing? And so we're, student services, we are responsible for providing them with the additional supports, additional trainings, and to actually go out into the schools to observe and to support and to coach and work with teachers if they need some support with the classroom management piece.
How are we tracking the various interventions?
Through educator's handbook.
Okay.
Through educator's handbook.
And so, you know, in the event that, you know, because I think what, to Board Member Crowley's point, I think at this point, and again, we're still early. Feedback already is sort of, you know, in some schools with some people has sort of been, there's this feeling that we can't suspend one student over another, or this student is in, you know, my classroom, and I really, this student doesn't need to be in my classroom, and they're disrupting the environment, and nothing's being done. I hear that, I hear that actually a little bit more frequently than I did before. I think, I'm just trying to kinda nail down, you know, what is expected, what is expected with the, with the new changes. Because it's not as if we're, it's devoid of accountability. It's just that there are additional steps associated with it.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the additional steps, and I think, again, having those conversations, if you're feeling like that's occurring within your schools, having those conversations with the principals. Sometimes additional things have occurred to student, occurred with students, but everyone doesn't know. They don't know about the additional conversations or specific circumstances that may be involved with that student. And so I would encourage, you know, anyone with concerns to talk with their principal regarding, you know, the situation, hey, I saw this kid right back, or hey, I'm not feeling safe, to reach out to their principal so that their principal can have those conversations with them.
Mr. Bohannon, can I say one thing really quickly? The, a lot of the solutions to many of the problems that, that schools are facing really lie even within the school. There is so much expertise. If you've ever seen students, which I've seen many, that go in one classroom and they are behaving, they go in another, and they're not. The expertise lies within the school. And so the principal taking the lead on creating a learning community where teachers can learn from one another, see each other in the classroom. 'Cause there are many students, if they can behave in one class, they can behave in all. And a lot of that is about the structures and the routines and the relationship. And so that learning community is really an important part of this as well, in addition to the training. So I just wanted to say that, 'cause a lot of the solutions lie within the school. But if you don't bring those problems to the forefront and have the space to discuss and see each other's classrooms, that learning opportunity is lost. So I just wanted to say that's another, another way.
And our students have a lot of answers. Just talking with them. Just talking with them. Why are you skipping? Why don't you wanna go to that particular class? They'll tell you why, a lot of times. And so our students have a lot of answers also.
My last question is, have we identified, you know, what sort of reduction or like what our goals are relative to the impact of the code within this sort of first year? Is, you know, have we had conversations about what are, what we're looking at or what we expect or what we want around the impact of the code?
Well, of course, we want a reduction. We haven't put a specific, you know, like 10% or 20% or 50%. I think we're monitoring the data. Now, specific schools may have included it in their school improvement goals. However, we're looking at what is going on. Because, keep in mind, we're just doing some of these interventions. So to think that, you know, a counselor may receive this restorative conversation on today, and they're gonna go and do it right the very next day. No, this is, you know, training, this is support, this is additional supports that are being provided. And so we do wanna see a reduction, but it is gonna take time. I mean, this isn't gonna be the magic bullet. We do have mindset changes. We have a lot of work that we have to work with. We're facing, you know, a lot of trauma. And we're having to work with students in those particular areas. And so I think right now, our goal is, you know, increasing our sense of belonging within our schools, making sure that our students feel connected within the schools. Once they feel connected, they're less likely to demonstrate those unwanted behaviors. And so that's what our goal is. And like I said, many schools may have put that within their school improvement plan to decrease discipline or ISS or OSS by a specific target. Our target right now is reduction, but we need to look in, look at reduction and making sure that we're using the interventions, so that we can contribute it to something.
Board Member Parker?
Yeah, and I just, Dr. Stokes, where I was referencing is Room Number 7, Management Placement of Disruptive Students. That's where that's under, so.
Okay. I don't have my code right here.
That's fine. I just wanted to let you know where it was, where it references the committee and all that. So, okay. I just wanna make sure that's clear at schools, that it makes more sense the way you explained it to me than the way I read the code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Board Member Crowley?
Yeah, my concern is that a high number of infractions is what gets red-flagged as there's a, as that there's an issue or there needs to be intervention there, you know, on part of that school. And I, my concern is that a low number of infractions does not necessarily mean that there aren't issues. And, and when administrators see a high number of infractions is going to instigate an investigation, there's an incentive there to keep the number of infractions under the red flag line. And that's kind of the gist of what I'm hearing from teachers and parents that, that there's not necessarily a willingness to move forward with documenting infractions because that's gonna trigger, you know, more oversight for them. So if you can stay under the radar and let things go, there's an incentive for that.
I mean, I've been talking to a lot of principals. I, that could be a perception, 'cause I'm not sure it's a reality. Because I, we're not seeing that, or we would see suspensions going way down. We would see ISS going way down. And honestly, there have been some reductions, but they're not massive. If people were scared of, we would see it way less.
Well, are we still doing the surveys to see how people feel? 'Cause I don't, I don't think this whole thing is tied to just infractions. It's also tied to how people feel about the school and their safety there. And that's, that's for teachers and students.
We are right now, I think it's right now, in the process of our next, what survey, right now?
November 1st, November 1st through the 15th.
First, yes, iteration, our first administration of that survey. That will call out those things. But honestly, yeah, so I'm not saying, I, I do think that's a perception. And other systems that have gone through behavioral changes like this, or changes in culture, these are the same things that are said. I just wanna publicly state that, that the oversight is no different than the oversight of walking in classrooms to look at instructions, sitting with the principal weekly for coaching conversations. That is not, there's no hand-slapping right now, because we are all in a learning curve. And until all the conditions are right, until we've created all the right conditions, then we are not in a hand-slapping phase. We are in a, we're all in this together, we're all learning. We have to do better for our kids. We have to do better for all kids. The data's showing we're not. And so we're all in this learning mode together. So I really need to make sure that that is the message that people hear, because that they, someone's getting in trouble with hand-slapping. Now, I will say, if you don't address it, if you don't get in your classrooms, if you don't support your teachers, if you don't address and keep working at it, it's not gonna get better. So it is a definite, all-in, all-hands-on-deck, just mode of improvement for everyone.
Any other questions, discussion?
Just, just one really quick comment. Culture change takes a long time, and it's never complete. It's never done. And for those of us who grew up in a culture of punishment, trying to, restorative is not something you get in one training, in one day. It's, takes a long time to start to see the world differently. And one of the big ones, again, for our children, is that the goal is for them to get back into school and learn. The goal is not just, it's not just to make them stop doing the thing we don't want them doing. It's for them to actually engage in being in school and being learners. And that takes time. It's hard to learn how to do things differently. So my guess is that when we think about implementation, I hope in two or three years, the words I'm hearing are, we're still learning. We're still learning, we're getting better at this.
So I just, Madam Superintendent, I wanted to ask about your comment. So the, when you talk about there's, at this point, we're in sort of this learning phase, and there's no hand-slapping. So I, I think, and I wanna make sure, it's not, not to the point where the stakes are so high, where principals need to be getting worried or need to be thinking about, like, oh, I need to keep these number, like, it's about, area superintendents are working with principals to help them. Not, it's, but it's not to the point where, you know, people, you know, there are consequences for not having, for not having certain things in place.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that.
It's coaching conversations, which are way different.
Any other questions, discussion?
Thank you.
Okay. Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the naming of the Carver High School football field. This was discussed in building and grounds with a period of public comment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Yeah. I have a discussion, sorry.
Discussion, yes, two discussions. Go ahead, Board Member Woodbury. Board Member Parker?
Years ago, I went to a football banquet, I mean, this has been years ago. And in honor of a winning season for Carver. And, and it was Coach Wilks's team. And I left that night so pumped, I couldn't even fall asleep for two or three hours because of the atmosphere in the room and the wonderful environment that that man created. And I cannot think of a more worthy person to name that, that field after. He was, he obviously had, was just a phenomenal. And the few times that I did have interactions with him, that confirmed that, and he was wonderful. So thank you all for, for, for doing that.
Board Member Woodbury?
Yes, so I would just like to thank Dr. Maxwell, who's the principal at Carver, for coming out tonight to obviously show support of this action item. And I want to thank the rest of Carver's staff and community members who are here, especially Mr. Ike Howard, who came up to speak earlier, an alum of Carver. And I was just telling Board Member Crowley, his mother did my mother's hair. So, community is definitely being represented this evening. I want to thank Coach Eaton, who came up, who I know is a beloved mentee of Mr. Vic Johnson, who was a board member here, and also Deputy Little, who is, you know, always supportive of keeping our community safe. But it is an honor and privilege to recognize Coach Keith Wilks, a man of integrity, service, love, definitely patience with me, and a man of leadership. I hope that these few words that I offer will definitely highlight the power and reciprocity of community, because maybe some of you may not know that Coach Wilks and my family grew up in Grove Apartments. And my brother, over the weekend, said he was so proud that a neighborhood kid would be honored in this way. And to know his baby sister, who was in kindergarten, first grade, would be a part of ideally this board who votes unanimously to support the name recognition. Although he was not my coach, he was my health teacher at Carver High School. And of course, my class just celebrated our 30th class reunion. So you can imagine how long it's been ago that he was my health teacher. And I was, as my grandmother would say, too smart for my own good. So I talked my classmates into turning in the same health article for two weeks until Coach Wilks called us. And so. And so, he, as soon as I walked in the door, he said, ah, Woodberry, I'm going to tell your parents on you, I, I got a letter going home to your parents this afternoon. And so everybody in the class was mad that had followed my instructions. Hey, he don't ever really read the articles. So we could just keep turning in, but he finally caught up to what we were doing. And so even to this day, he is, when he sees me, he's like, oh, they're going Woodberry and hubbub madness. But, and then lastly, he was my little brother's coach and I can recall my little brother as an underclassman coming on campus and he came home to tell me this. He said, Shay, Coach Wilks caught me coming back on campus, but I think we squashed it. Because when he saw me, he said, hey, young man, you know you don't supposed to be off campus. He knows all of his, you know, players to that level. And so my little brother said, oh, Coach, I got a cheeseburger for you though. And so he said, Coach said, well, this not gonna work next time. So it, it's just, I'm just so happy to share those little nuggets, although I have so many experiences with Coach Wilks as a former student and it is just such a pleasure and honor to be able to recognize his name on the Carver High School football field. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to thank the, the members of the public who came forward to give testimony. And I hope that the board doesn't have amnesia about the testimony to coaches when it comes time to talk about expanding our extracurriculars.
Okay, all, yes. So, thank you. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All in favor to our, to board members remotely?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the naming of the RJ Reynolds Wrestling Room. This was in the B and G committee and there was a period of public comment. Do I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Any opposed?
Yes.
Excuse? All, okay. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the county facility lease agreements. That was in the B and G committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, all in fav, any discussion? All in favor?
Any opposed?
Okay, motion passes.
Yes, Lido.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Motion passes. Next, consider approval of the addendum to the food service management agreement. That was in our B and G committee. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, Lido.
Okay.
I think she was saying yes to approval.
She's in favor. Yes, yes, I got it. All right, all, motion passes. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the East Forsyth High School design contract with DLR. This was in our B and G committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes. Yes, in favor.
Okay, motion passes. Thanks. Next is consider approval of the construction manager at-risk contract for Brunson Elementary School. This was in our B and G committee. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Seba. It, it's in, it's regarding the Brownfields program. So it exists, my understanding is that it exists so that we complete the steps and then if we complete all of the steps as required of us, then we can build on the site. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the NC Brownfields program is watching, watching our moves step by step, making sure that we're following their guidance on how to, how to treat the site.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Seba, do we have our number on that case squared away? Yes, we do. And it was a transposition of numbers and I appreciate Dr. Antonazi pointing that out to us so that we can correct that on future reporting.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also ask if you could specifically reply to, I think, question number two that Mr. Antonazi had regarding the safety of building on the site. Because I too had concerns and had to really be taught from staff around how the Brunfield project works and trying to assure the safety of building on, on that site.
So I'll just plainly say that, or say that the site will be safe to build on for our students.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Our motion passes. Consider approval of the changes to Policy 4116. Do I have a motion? And that was out of Policy Committee. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the Student Run State Credit Union. That is a yearly contract that we have every year. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, any opposed? That's, that's unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. First, consider approval of the general personnel report. Next, consider approval of the September 13th, 2022 Board of Education meeting minutes. And lastly, consider approval of the September 27th, 2022 Board of Education meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve all three? Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. And before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.